Lock guys, we're going to call the meeting to order at six. And so this is Wednesday, February the second and six o'clock. And this is a combined committee of the whole administration finance committee. And with the public works environmental services and facilities committee. Meeting together for the purpose of budget meeting number four. Putting together the twenty twenty two township budget. And that's the purpose of the meeting. And I'm going to move now to approval of the agenda.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I thought. I don't know where I got the idea, but I thought that we were going to have the budget actual report. You're ending twenty December thirty first, twenty twenty one in our package. And I don't see it there was the was the agenda review.
So we did the agenda review, so I'm gonna go to the C A O. I was looking for the budget actual report as well, then maybe Mr. Grant can bring us up to date.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll we will add the budget actuals for twenty twenty one. As part of the fourth quarter report.
That'll be before the next budget.
That will be before the 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 next budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was I was looking for this.
Now, the one thing is, Mr. Grant, I think you should indicate as well. As you did to me during the review, budget review. Roughly where you think when the treasurer thinks we're going to be standing. Just so the councils got that in their mind, I did indicate that during the budget review meeting, I thought council should know that. Roughly where we stand, or at least where we think we're gonna stand, we know that the numbers are not finalized yet, but.
Yeah, with the, I think, Mr. Chair, I would I would say that we will be somewhere between. A surplus of one hundred to two hundred thousand.
Okay, so that's a under expenditure related to twenty twenty one budget estimates. So that gives you kind of a rough idea of where we stand there. Okay, so that answers your question, is that you need a mover? I need mover to approve the agenda as presented.
I will move.
Moved by councillor Cameron, does he have a second? Councillor Dillabaw, as presented, those in favor? Motion is carried. And I'm moving now to item number three on the agenda, which is disclosure pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here, the secret? Chair registers no disclosures of pecuniary interest. Moving to item number five, four on the agenda, as discussion items, we have none. So that leads us directly into item number five. The first item on item number five is a five A, which is the update. To the twenty twenty two draft capital budget. And just there is a briefing note with that. And maybe through the C A O. If you would, to the treasurer, just have the treasurer remind us of the changes that were made as a result. I think it was a budget meetings number three, two and one. Would, Mr. C A O?
Certainly, yeah, there's been a lot of changes to the capital budget. And those are external changes and some specific to councils discussions about capital. Some of the major changes we did find out and were able to confirm that we have O S I F money. That is about forty five percent more than what we had received in twenty twenty one. So we're receiving four hundred and twenty two thousand six seventy seven. I've taken and utilized some of that money towards the storm project. So taking four twenty of the four twenty two and applying it to both Johnstown and Spencerville drainage. You'll see that in the capital funding analysis sheet.
Okay, now, can you tell us where?
Certainly, if you look under storm management, which is the third department down. You can see under grants, government grants, that there is now two ten for the Spencerville and two ten for Johnstown.
Just hang on a second now. Oh, yes. Oh, I've got this big spreadsheet in front of me here.
I see the two ten, two ten.
Two ten and two ten.
Just sorry, no, just two ten.
Oh. Under government grants plus gas taxes, that the two ten, where's the? What was the source again, please?
It's O S I F formula based funding, grant funding.
Does that show OCIF Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund? And what was the quantum?
The total amount received for twenty twenty two is four twenty two six seven seven. And we're going to use four twenty of that funding for the two drainage projects.
Okay, so that's the two ten and the two ten.
Correct.
And you're proposing to use it that way.
That is, that is the proposed, yes.
Where's the second two ten? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Now, the the. So where is the revenue in? The the whole revenue in is the four twenty two.
It doesn't show on the capital funding analysis, that's just in the information item, you'll see it in the reserve schedule.
So just let me find reserve schedule, just want to see where. Been on reserve schedule. At four twenty. So on the reserve schedule, where does it come in on the reserve schedule?
It would be under the O S I F Formula Reserve Fund thirty eight. Or ninety eight, thirty eight, eighteen, you can see it as highlighted.
Four twenty two six seventy seven, there it is.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so go ahead, please.
So another bit of information that the township received on January eleventh. Was that we were not successful in our application for the Johnstown and Cardinal tennis ring, tennis courts. So that's a loss of funding of four hundred and eighty three, six hundred. I've just taken that off the funding analysis. Right now, I've kept those two projects in in their scope. There will lead to be a decision whether we continue those projects in the twenty two budget or. And if we do, then to what what depth of scope or or where we fund that, those two projects.
Well, that's the two twenty six eight forty and the two fifty six seven sixty.
Correct.
Question marks beside those.
And then our and then our final, well, there were a few other smaller ones, but the the bigger one that's impacting the capital funding analysis. Is the most recent decision by committee to purchase, to give pre-budget approval to purchase the fire truck, the tanker. So you'll concede that that we've added the actual asset purchase of three seventy two. We're using the same two fifty that we were going to put into reserves, we're going to actually pull that. We're gonna use that money but through taxation, because so and you can see it sitting there in two fifty and as as from taxation. We were gonna tax for it to put it into the reserve. So to balance that, so that it balances, we're going to pull the difference from the from the fire department's vehicle. Reserve, and you can see that in the reserve schedule.
Then there were a number of smaller items like the lawn tractor. And the lawn tractor appeared on one of our earlier. Capital request forms as thirty thousand. And it still shows as thirty, but I think it was actually executed at twenty one thousand. So, and and we did ask the question, would there be sufficient? Depending on where we stood with the twenty twenty one budget, could we not make that purchase of that lawn tractor? No, it wasn't lawn tractor, it was the sidewalk, sidewalk plow, that's what it was.
Yes, and it's been removed.
It's removed?
Yeah, you can see where it was additionally, it was on there and then we've taken it off. And you can see that that thirty five thousand dollars, which was originally budgeted, has been taken off because we have purchased the unit in twenty twenty one. With twenty twenty one funding.
And it was twenty, and how much was it again?
Originally, it was budgeted for thirty five thousand.
And how much was the actual expenditure?
Just shy of twenty two, it's twenty one and change, I don't know the exact. Purchase price of it.
The full thirty five is gone.
Yeah, the full thirty five comes off, yes, exactly.
Correct.
So that's gone. Now, what are we doing with regard to this three quarter ton truck where we didn't get any bids?
At this point, we're leaving it in as is, we're basically using fifty five of last year's money that'll stay in with. Or in the amount carried forward until such time as we needed the the only ask for twenty two in taxation is five thousand dollars. So at this point, we've left that in.
Right, okay, and. Now, the off-road four by four with the plow attachment is gone. Right?
Yes, as well as the bleachers.
Yep, and okay, now what happened with the bleachers, are they gone totally?
We, I believe the last conversation was that we wouldn't buy them entirely and that they potentially would buy buy them individually. Under the operating budget.
Right, and the cardinal pool upgrade still stays in. At two seventy three. Transferring seventy three five from reserve, good evening, and and two hundred from taxation.
Right, and the only other variance was because of the addition of doing the full Johnstown. Drainage project, the other coordinate coordinating part is the roads portion, so Sophia Street was added. You can see that at the very bottom of the capital funding analysis sheet. So we've added the cost of Sophia and we're using some gas tax or O C I F. I'd have to look to see where I'm funding that from, I think it's gas tax. And so there is an addition of fifty three thousand added to taxation for twenty twenty, like to be supported by taxation in twenty twenty two.
So that puts both Mary and Sophia in the program then, right?
Correct, if we're doing the drainage project, we're gonna do the roads in both cases.
Okay. So are there any other questions here with the way this stands right now? So the way this stands right now, you would look, your your capital, excuse me. Your need for capital from taxation would be the total of two seven thirty one, six seventy seven?
Correct.
And then the concept is to borrow one point five and. Raise one point two three one. So still, still, still in the concept of borrowing one and a half million.
And that's basically the storm portion, the taxation supported portion for the storm project. You can see up above, it's one point four seven. So I just rounded it to one and a half, but that's that's basically covering the majority of those costs associated with the storm project.
When you say one point four seven, I got one forty five. One forty five, ninety seven, is that what I'm looking at? Oh, plus?
No, if I could, Mr. Chair, it would be under the storm water management. It would be.
Third, third section down.
The ninth number down, under the twenty twenty two taxation.
One four seventy one, eight eight.
Yes.
Correct.
So in essence, we would be borrowing to do those two drainage programs.
Instead of using taxation money to support that, those projects, yes.
Other questions?
Question, where?
Go ahead.
Total for capital, we got two seven three one there. Lots in including the four hundred some thousand dollars through the tennis courts in that.
Through the chair, yes, it does include the the almost five hundred thousand for the tennis courts.
Probably something that should be looked at. As opposed, and I I I'm reluctant, as and I've said this before, I'm reluctant to borrow on these kinds of projects, but. It's well counsel, but once you borrow that one and a half million, it doesn't matter. We did have some sheets from the treasurer at the previous meeting. December the ninth, we did have some. Costs of borrowing, and when I say costs of borrowing, what what our annual and semi-annual payments would be. One and a half million. You have not a hundred thousand a year. Still gotta find that hundred thousand. And so, and that's over twenty years, you're spreading that kind of borrowing over twenty years for a project that. Makes you wonder how you're gonna do any other drainage work.
Go ahead.
Okay, so that's the update on on the twenty twenty two draft capital budget. Is there no other questions, I'm about to move on.
Just just one, Mr. Baron, I think it's it's worthwhile noting. In this, and you just brought up a good point about doing future drainage projects, there there will be future drainage drainage projects. You know, we have. A grant application for highway two and cardinal for wastewaterers as well. That that certainly will get successful, you know, require a sizable. Not in this budget, but in future budgets, a sizable investment. For waste water, I know that'll have to be funded through through that, but it's still going to be not all paid out, it'll have to be borrowed as well. So there's a considerations to all of those drainage projects as as we move forward when we're borrowing for that that term. It's not mentioned in here, but I I just think that, you know, keeping our minds forward as we're tying the hands of future councils. The projects we're doing, it certainly has impacts to what other councils will be able to do.
Now, that's that's our problem, is is tying the hands down the future. Because, I mean, our problem, because of the nature of the way things have been handled, we don't have any problem borrowing money. I mean, we have a lot of borrowing capacity. The township has a lot of unused borrowing capacity. What we don't have is payback capacity without, you know, without doing something with the taxation. And if you're gonna do something with the taxation, you might just well do it, do the project, do the taxation now and do the project. But anyway, that's just my way of looking at it. Okay, so if there are no more issues or questions there, I'm gonna go on to item number five B. Item number five B is the draft public works budget. And item number five B. There is a briefing note on page four of nineteen. And then the budget itself rolls out on page five and six and seven and eight. And nine and ten. I go, it even goes to eleven, so there you are. So chairs open for, chairs open for discussion on the draft public works budget. Now, to the chair, to Mr. Grant, did. Did you want to have the treasurer highlight anything here?
Um, I think it would probably be a good idea, just a high level overview from the from the treasurer. Because I think it's in a number of cases, the the draft is able to observe some some of those increases. So I'll have the treasurer speak to that.
Go ahead, please.
Certainly, so you can see with the public works. The the base and throughout all of these budgets, you're going to see the same with respect to salary increases, non-union being the two point seven four. And union being the one point five percent increase that has implications to the budgets. And then the corresponding benefits associated with those increases. We are anticipating a fifteen percent increase in our insurance premium, we are still awaiting those. The renewal is a March first renewal, so we're still awaiting those premiums. We'll we'll have to update the premiums once, you know, once the premiums are more secure determined. So the operating revenues themselves have increased slightly, and that's mainly because of. And with our new snowplow contractor, we did not get a bid for doing the E M S station. So the public works is actually taking on doing the snow plowing of the E M S station. So there'd be a little revenue from from doing that, additional revenue from doing that. And we've also increased the aggregate resources revenue, mainly because we've seen over the past few years. That revenue has has been a lot larger than what we've previously budgeted. So there's a little bit extra revenue to offset some of the expenditures. And the two major expenditures that are different from last year, or majorly different from last year, which contribute to the. To the increase of about six point two percent or six point three percent in the operating costs. Are the the increase of the public works consulting costs. We've added the money associated with the gravel needs road study. And then the addition of the of the greater loan. So both those things are kind of the contributor to to the increase in the budget. All other aspects to the budget have been, you know, shifted around based on where the need is. So you'll see some ups and downs in in some of the operating costs, expenses lines.
So just before I ask for comments from around the table, I don't understand. The E M S station plowing becomes a source of revenue.
So originally, we contracted, we we paid through the contractor that we had. The counties were billed from the township with the contractor fees. So instead of an outside contractor, our our public work staff will be doing the plowing. And we're gonna maintain the same billing to the counties as was done previously by the previous contractor.
Okay, so so their lease is not net net net, plowing is extra to the lease and it's a separate invoice.
Plowing and previously, it was grass cutting as well, but I believe they've taken over the grass cutting contract themselves. But the plowing aspect was something that we billed separately.
Okay, so that explains that, and then how does, I don't understand how aggregate aggregate revenue. Increase in aggregate revenues, what's aggregate revenue?
So that revenue is based on the amount of gravel that's taken out of any pits in the township. So there there's a an amount comes to us annually on the tonnage that's taken out of the gravel pits. And it's it's done through, I think, through Ontario aggregates resources, I believe, is the entity that sends us the money. Based on the royalties that that they that the pit operators pay. There's like a, it's like a tax, I guess.
Oh, so so it's a, oh, no, it's a royalty payment from the from the operators.
From the aggregate that's collected through an Ontario aggregates resources group, and then that's forwarded to the municipality annually.
Okay, oh, I understand. And why would it increase from nine thousand to? Well, you, so it did, we budgeted last year nine and we actually received twenty five.
Yeah.
And we're budgeting to receive fifteen, is that correct?
Correct, and that's based on kind of a five-year average. So I don't want to overestimate it based on just what was taken out in twenty twenty. Because it would be, what was taken out in twenty twenty is given to us in twenty one, what's taken out in twenty one will give, will be provided to us in twenty two.
Oh, I know, okay, so we get it a year late.
Yeah, because they have to wait till all the, you know, all the reporting is done on the amount that's removed from the pits.
Okay, chairs open for other questions. Okay, councillor.
Yeah, I have some issues here, Mr. Mayor. On our vehicle expense. Four years now, since I've been on council, this T five vehicle, which is a two oh nine international. We put in, well, we're gonna put in a hundred twenty thousand dollars for years in this vehicle. The two oh nine is at two hundred thousand miles on. Why are we even having that around? Why not get rid of that vehicle? I mean, in the last four years, our vehicle expense went from three fourteen to nineteen, to seventeen twenty twenty. Then I get all excited, twenty twenty one, I see it down to two forty four, and I said, we're coming in the right direction, because we've got newer equipment. Now it's back up to three hundred thousand.
Oh, which line item are you looking at?
The line item is.
It's on page seven.
Seven of the total. Is thirty two dash five eight two eight, page eight of nineteen, at the top.
Page eight nineteen. Total vehicle expenses?
Yeah.
Okay, and so from two twenty. Two hundred and twenty thousand four ninety budgeted in twenty twenty one, two hundred and forty four thousand six hundred spent. And budgeting basically three hundred thousand in twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
Your issue?
Back up again, and we've got newer equipment. I don't understand. Like, this T five, it's gotta go. Run.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I I think that the big difference with respect to the. Total vehicle expenses, knowing from whether you want to go two twenty to 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 two ninety nine or two forty four to ninety nine. Is basically the hundred and two thousand that is is going to go in on on greater payments. If you if you if you remove that, we're still in 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 pretty good shape or in line with what.
Yes, but why would greater payments come in on the repairs and maintenance? I mean, that's not repairs and maintenance, I mean, that's that's a long-term debt. It it shouldn't be taken as a repairs and maintenance item, that that I can see, that's where I have. If that's the explanation, I would have a problem with that.
I I still have a problem spending twenty eight thousand dollars on 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 a. On a fifteen-year-old vehicle.
And now you're looking where? Other, you're looking at line item, be T five repair maintenance, twenty eight thousand.
Thirty thirty two dash five six five eight on page seven and nineteen.
Yes, I see the number. Thirty thousand dollars budgeted in twenty twenty one and twenty six thousand actually spent on vehicle. And then twenty eight thousand budgeted to be spent repairs and maintenance in twenty twenty two. So, and what did you say about the vehicle, a two thousand and nine vehicle, did you say?
Yeah, with two hundred thousand miles on.
Mr. Grant?
Through 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 the chair, certainly, track five, I I believe is on the. Five-year plan is is looking to be replaced in twenty twenty three. No, no, no doubt that it it needs to be looked at being replaced.
Well, twenty eight thousand dollars is a least. Minimum of five percent of a new vehicle, probably even closer to ten percent of the cost of a new vehicle. Two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. If you replace that, it's twenty. I assume that that's a heavy plow. Two thousand and nine is a heavy snowplow. It's a is it a dual-axle plow, dual-axle truck?
It is.
Okay, so. And yet there's nothing in the. On the capital plan, there's no proposal or recommendation in the capital plan to replace it.
Not not, uh, to the chair, not in twenty twenty two, but I I believe in the five-year, I believe it's scheduled for twenty twenty three.
No, but, Senator, what did you say was the total cost today?
Twenty, uh, today, it's twenty six thousand, forty thousand in twenty nineteen.
I just spent now forty thousand in what? Twenty nineteen?
Yeah. And twenty nine thousand eight hundred seventy four in twenty twenty. Twenty six thousand one hundred thirty eight twenty twenty one. And then we want a possibility. Twenty eight, and my my biggest problem is when the. Putting this money in to to these vehicles. But the truck is down, that means a man is down. There's more cost to just. Repairing these trucks. We we lose a man and we lose. Work where where it should be, you know, performing. Plowing or or ditching or whatever we use it for in the spring and summer, so. It has more consequences than just breakdowns.
Go ahead, through the chair, what what? I'm looking just at old notes from twenty twenty. What year is that?
Two thousand.
Two thousand nine. T five. International. I think it's got a hundred ninety six thousand miles on it.
T five, two thousand and nine. International tandem dump plow diesel. Cost in twenty twenty. It's twenty nine thousand eight seventy four, I believe, last number you just gave us. And at that time, which this report, oh, this report was February the fourth, twenty twenty one. And. So those that was the cost to the end of twenty twenty. And at that time, it had a hundred ninety six thousand miles on it on February the fourth. Well, does Counselor Dilva have other? Have other support here to do something for this truck? Haven't had a report on this. We haven't had one of these maintenance reports for some period of time. I think this is the last one that I've seen. February the fourth. Twenty twenty one, February the fourth. Year ago, year old.
Almost to the day.
Go ahead.
Yes, through through you, I I I guess either to Madam Chair, Madam Treasurer.
Through the through the CIO.
To the CIO or through the CIO. On the on page eight. Near the top of the page, it says shop overhead or overhead shop. And we've got fuel. Is that the fuel for all the vehicles? That I see primarily on page on page seven. And the reason I'm asking is this, we start out on page six with the. Vehicle expense. We've got T one license and then T one fuel, and we've got T nineteen license. And then T nineteen fuel and. And it breaks it out that those vehicles, what the fuel is, and then all of a sudden it stops. So this hence my question. That line item thirty two five six oh five for fuel. We're budgeting this year ninety thousand dollars. Is that for the fuel for the rest of the vehicles on on the on the page seven?
And through the through through the chair, can the Director of Operations correct me when I leave that as well? You excluding the the two pickup trucks.
Gas, your your parents for diesel.
Hang on one second, because I'm not, I didn't follow the answer.
The that expenses for the diesel, that's for our diesel equipment.
Which is the ninety thousand?
Ninety thousand, and that the other vehicles that have a listing separate for their fuel are gas vehicles. So it's gasoline, it's supposed to be.
So it was T twenty two. What is T twenty two?
It's a gasoline truck.
T twenty two was going to be the new truck, the three quarter.
Well, just a minute now.
Okay, what's nineteen dash one? Yeah, nineteen dash one.
Nineteen dash one is the white. Half ton truck. So it was it was purchased in twenty nineteen as truck one.
Okay, so then that's gasoline fuel that I see.
Correct.
Okay, so we don't track the amount of diesel because I take it. I take it with the diesel, we pump it from our own facility.
That's correct. We have color to add, clear.
Okay. Okay, so do we really know? We have we have a report on these trucks, how much fuel they're going through? Or on this equipment?
Not this time.
I think I've asked this before. Okay. I think that report would help me a little bit. Maybe understanding. So anytime I see I I see a repair and maintenance, that does not include fuel. Now. On page. On page seven. Line item thirty two dash fifty six sixty eight, T six, repair and maintenance. We just put fifteen thousand dollars into it. And now we're expecting in twenty twenty two that we're going to spend another twenty three? And it's just used to haul water?
Chair, no, it's actually it's a plow truck. It's just it got additional duties now. It was modified. When we originally put in the request for a one-ton truck. And that is the fifty five thousand that's being carried forward. That staff had found a means of mounting a large water tank in the back of the dump truck with the. And build up a small sprayer system on it. Yes, so as opposed to meeting the need for a one-ton truck to carry that large tank. That kind of eliminated that need for the one-ton that was brought up by council previously. It was discussion about whether we really needed a one-ton truck or we needed a three-quarter. Originally, we needed it for that tank, and that kind of eliminated, so we could drop down the three-quarters.
Yeah, I I I recall I recall the 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 item. But again, twenty three, another twenty three thousand dollars in repairs in twenty twenty two. When now most of the most of the hard work on this truck is during the plowing season. So hauling water through the summer. I wouldn't suspect we're going to put a whole lot of miles on it. Unless it's going to be used for something else through the through the summer.
Is this the one called T six?
Yes, it is, yes. Yeah. I I just. You know, we we last year we spent fifteen thousand dollars on whatever. And now we're looking to spend another twenty three thousand. It's almost in experience.
Through the chair, I believe, it needs a new set of tires, I think it is four. It's part of that.
Well, okay, I'm I'm really, really somewhat dumbfounded.
There's only two people speaking, but I sense I sense some discomfort, but. Some of these errors and maintenance costs on this. And it's not as if we hadn't talked about this before, Counselor Hunter.
How many trucks do we have plowing?
Twenty five, T four, T six, T seven.
T six, okay, you said both plow every day?
Yes.
So so Counselor Hunter, can we just get those those identification numbers again? What are your active plow trucks?
There's T. Nineteen oh four. T twenty oh three. Twenty four, sorry, T five, T six, T seven.
T five, T six.
And T seven.
Yes.
And T twenty oh eight.
T twenty oh eight.
Yes.
Counselor Dilval is what is was concerned about the T five. The T five one is a, what did you say, Counselor, twenty nineteen?
Twenty oh nine.
Two thousand and nine. What's T six? Twenty fourteen?
Mine says mine. Mine says T five is twenty ten.
And what's T seven? I got T seven is twenty eleven. Why are these numbers not consistent? Why are these identification numbers not consistent? Why are they showing one thing, one place and something else at different places?
Chair.
Yes.
The difference in the numbers are with the newer trucks. We've gone to the kind of the T twenty oh eight first dash weights. For example, the T twenty indicates the year of purchase of the truck. And the oh eight is the is the truck number. So the T four, T five trucks are older trucks that that were incorporated into that numbering system. So which includes the the actual date of the truck. Through the chair.
Go ahead. I I I can't speak for the mayor, but I'm guessing that he means that why is my T seven different with his T seven? Like mine says it's two thousand and twelve, my T five says it's two thousand and ten. I think everybody else says that it's two thousand and nine, two thousand and eleven. So I'm just I'm using page five from our November. Meeting for our capital, long-range capital forecast, unless the kilometers. Everything but our year dates.
So through through the chair, I I certainly say that the November five-year capital forecast would have the correct years. It would be twenty ten.
Counselor Hunter.
Well, it is, as you know, I've always been favored getting new new equipment. But. Percentage of. Maintenance done on these, if they are, as a. Director of Operations suggests, but a lot of us. Is in here is put new tires. On price tires, I that. Takes just general wear and care that you gotta change and. If we had more budget to work with this year, I'd be the first one to say we should get rid of that truck truck five. The gist of it is, even if we have budget to get rid of that truck five, you're not getting rid of it this year. You can't buy it. So I think we're just wasting our time worrying about getting rid of it this year because you're not going to get it anyway. You know, you mentioned that yourself, both counties, they told you the budget early this year for next year's truck, so.
Yes, but I mean, the the point is that. If this if this vehicle is identified as 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 finished its useful life. Then even if it is next year, we should be. Should be planning it now for next year.
Unless it's budgeted for next year in twenty two thousand twenty three.
Well, not budgeted, it's it's on the list to be budgeted.
Through the chair. To the CEO, what what route is that T five? What's what does it do to follow? And the six, what what what's its area?
I I believe that's in the north and like you're hiding the note.
Counselor.
Yes, I'd just like to. Bring your attention. Just need an explanation for the sidewalk plow line, line item thirty two fifty seven ninety eight. Where we've got seven thousand dollars budgeted this year. For repair and maintenance. One is a one is a fairly new. Fairly new unit. And the old unit last year, we only put. Eleven hundred dollars into it. Not even eleven hundred dollars. And now we're budgeting for seven thousand. For repair and maintenance on two vehicles. And one one, which I understand is fairly new. I just have a hard time with that with that entry.
Where are you?
Well, it's on page seven, Mr. Mayor, and it's line item thirty two. Five seven nine eight.
Seven nine eight.
Sidewalk plow repair and maintenance. Line.
Thirty five hundred dollars budgeted in twenty twenty one. One thousand and sixty six expended.
Right.
And seven thousand budgeted.
Right. Which tell which tells me that really that's thirty five hundred dollars each for repairs. If you break it in half. I I I like I say, I I just find seven thousand dollars for for a unit we just owned for. Couple months. And that all has to come with a taxation.
I guess through through the chair, I I would. I would I I would think committee and council would be pretty pleased with the repair and maintenance of seven thousand. Two sidewalk units operating in the winter and also sweeping. The some of sidewalks and pathways. Those particular units or for parts there, it doesn't take very long to 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 rack up a.
I don't have.
Well, I'm I'm looking at the fact that the one unit we 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 spent less than eleven hundred dollars. Now we've got two units, and all of a sudden, even if we double it and spend twenty two hundred dollars. It's a long way away from the seven thousand dollar line.
We had a pretty lucky year last year.
Yeah.
Because we we had had a couple year year ago, we had one bill and it was around six thousand dollars. Fund card, so. And the expensive pieces of equipment to buy, and they weren't great, when they break, the expensive piece of equipment's a work on.
Yeah, I think I think part of that six thousand dollars was a new box. It's a new box. Which. That's questionable too. I know there's there are expenses to work on, as I know from experience. My son worked a lot for two or three years working on it, and every time he went for call for a part. For him, but he was figuring it would be a two hundred dollar bill, bill was seven or eight hundred dollars. Charge for, and he. Could source different parts on. Could source different parts on same monies. Their expenses to work on.
Okay, so.
Anyway.
I don't know where we are here, gentlemen, we're all over the place because. I sense a certain amount of discomfort, but we're but we're not zeroing in on anything here. It's the discussion is all over the place. Until I can see some coalescence of effort here, I don't know what to do. And I I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about these repair and maintenance costs, as indicated that several times. During the year, I don't think we get enough of these reports. We're here, we are at budget time trying to determine whether or not we were effective and efficient with our last year's expenditures and. We we don't really know that, except when, you know, Counselor Dillaball brings up that T five. And then gives us a four-year history on it. And the fact that it's got, you know, it's got it's got two hundred thousand kilometers on it.
Miles.
Miles, isn't it?
Probably kilometers, but.
Okay, and I still didn't get an answer as to why my total vehicle expense line. Which is on page eight of nineteen. Total vehicle expense line goes from two twenty-four ninety budgeted in twenty twenty-one. To almost three hundred thousand in twenty twenty-two. And the explanation is that there's a hundred and two thousand dollars of greater payment that's in payments in there. And I don't understand why the greater payments would be embedded in repairs and maintenance. So I'm very uncomfortable here. Because this is, we're talking taxation, we're talking raising money from the public, as we're talking about.
So I guess through the through the chair, if I if I may respond to that, typically with the lease payments on previous owners, they were included within the operating portion of. Public Works Department, it's just under. Vehicle expenses, not not specific to just repair and maintenance. And if you look at on page seven. Line item thirty-two. Fifty-seven twenty-nine with principal payments. We're we're looking at ninety-eight thousand four hundred in payments compared to forty thousand or forty-one thousand in twenty twenty-one. And that will be interest, the loan interest payments.
So it's broken out. What you're pointing out to me is that it's broken out those interest payments. That that hundred and two thousand is broken out as the ninety-eight four. Plus the four thousand five three fifty-three.
Yes.
It's broken out on those two line items.
Yes.
If not actually as repairs and maintenance.
Mr. Mayor, if you go directly on that same page seven, if you go directly below, I think the C A O was talking about the. Lease payments for the lower line item thirty-two fifty-seven thirty-five. If you look at it, twenty twenty-one budget, it's thirty-seven to sixty, the actual is forty thousand, and it goes down to the remaining two payments, the six thousand, and that falls off. Right, so it shows the lease payment for that for that in that same budget as well.
Yes, okay, I see your point. And then repairs and maintenance on that same piece of equipment is shown as a separate number. Twenty-seven hundred.
Okay, well, what do you want to do from this from this point on? Otherwise, if there's no other questions, I'm going to move on.
I I have mine relate back to. They're not vehicle maintenance questions, this one, one question, just so that I understood, I asked ahead. Just that there appears to be an increase in shop labor and rushing labor. But a fairly large decrease in grass cutting, so does do those two line items, they they seem to be closely sort of equal out in a general budget manner, but. Does that, you know, ultimately mean that we're going to see a lot more brushing and a lot less grass cutting? Or are we just going to be more efficient in the grass cutting we do? Or I know certainly we've been complimented on the amount of grass that we've been taking care of and the maintenance stuff that we've been doing in all of our areas. And I hate to see that that fall away, the reduction in the grass cutting. And was seven thousand eight hundred dollars, so small, small concern there, so. Maybe through the chair to Mr. Shaw, I think, so your department or.
Through the chair, I believe some of that cost was with the grass cutting we had done by contractor. So that's the contractor stuff this year, or sorry, last year, early last year. That captured some of those savings there or saves. The grass cutting, the township is done with the with the mower they had, we did receive a lot of comments. Really nice stuff that they did, but unfortunately it broke down, as you recall, from the business cases. Basically, it was really worth repairing, so. With your question on on. The mark continuing and keeping the grass cut, I guess that depends on that, whether you want to go with a new mower or contracted it. You may recall, so from the business case that the costs associated with the capital costs. And the operational costs were about thirty-three dollars, I think it was, were down to employees an hour. And it's a hundred and twenty dollars an hour for a contractor.
So. Fair fair enough, but I'm talking about just the grass mowing labor, so labor line item thirty-four fifty-six thirteen.
Yeah, so if I may, through the chair, the the basically the ten thousand was was. In the the actual for the time spent on on grass cutting, so the plan is to do the same as twenty twenty-one. We were a little bit later in the year with respect to actually receiving that brush head. And we're going to hopefully do some of those steeper. Ditch areas with with the brush head, so that doesn't have the the seam straight on on that mower and.
Okay, so I still don't know where, what the what. I still don't know what causes line fifty-six thirteen. To drop from seventeen eight eighty budgeted to ten thousand budgeted based on.
So that was based on the actual work plan that took place in two twenty-one.
And that work plan was what?
Well, the the actual labor amount spent on grass mowing was what was ten thousand. Which I believe ended up with with two two rounds of of mowing.
And we did it ourselves? And so it was internal?
It was internal, correct.
Just so in other words. We budgeted seventeen eight, assuming that it would be a contract. But we didn't actually do it by means of a contract, we did it internally. And charged ten thousand, no, nine thousand nine ninety-seven to labor. What did we charge to the machine?
So i- if I may, Mr. Chair, is the backup, so. The 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 estimated labor in the twenty twenty-one budget internal was was seventeen thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. On the actual spent labor on on the document was was ten thousand, there was additional, there was additional time spent. There was some brushing and a few other areas if you. Look, for instance, if we go down to brushing under thirty-four fifty-six twenty-one, the labor estimated there was eighteen point one, but it's. What you see, shy of thirty-six thousand and actual was was fifty-seven six point five. What sort of balances it that didn't give us more time spent brushing.
So just and I think I think I got my brain around this for two ways, is that we're going to. When we're going to use the brushing machine to cut dishes, the ditches, that'll be considered brushing. So it won't relate back to the grass cutting budget, and we plan to cut as much grass as we cut last year.
And that is a very good summary.
Clears up my question, thank you.
Okay, so are there any other questions here, Counselor Cam?
Yes, I just want to draw your attention to the under bridges and culverts.
Okay, now let us find you.
Yes, reducing culverts and it's a line item thirty-three fifty-six seventy-five.
What page?
Sorry, it's on.
It's really three, it has to be.
It's on page eight, yes, page eight. Now, we have six thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one, nothing used, nothing used in twenty twenty-one, six thousand dollars. Against 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 taxes. And also, if you look at the twenty twenty-one budget, there was six thousand dollars again, and nothing used in twenty twenty. And again, it was just six thousand dollars that we that we. That we put on the on the tax rule. Are we are we expecting to do some bridge inspections in twenty twenty-two? And the other part of the question is. Do we have a, do we get a warning when we're gonna, somebody is going to inspect bridges? And then we schedule them or or how does that how does that fall into? The scheme of things.
The chair.
And through the through the chair. Yes, the the bridge inspections will be completed in twenty twenty-two. We believe that there are fifteen or sixteen inspections to be.
And will the six thousand dollars covered?
As for the last inspection, that six thousand should. Answer my questions on the grass cutting.
Okay, where are we here? I I go ahead, Counselor.
So over over this budget, looking at everything, and I think, well, we know where all the money going. The gist of the matter is, when you look at the bottom line, total public works expenses last year, with budgets at eighteen ninety-nine, nine, ten. Public works come in at seventeen eighty-four, seven thirty-one. They come in under budget, they're budgeting for. Two million nineteen seventy.
Counselor, where is?
Rate's bottom of the of the report for total public works.
No, we have page ten, page ten, bottom, bottom. Page ten, bottom, go ahead, Counselor.
We're budgeting two hundred nineteen seven fourteen, that's an increase of one hundred nineteen. Our treasure exchange, that first word's coming from, we've got the payment on the rate and the increase in in wages and stuff. So really, the 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 general budget hasn't increased anything except for what was forced to in increase by the loan payment. And and what wages went up, I I think. Your elects are going to come in under budget again this year, did a good job last year, I think, coming in, so. I think we're trying to second guess our our management here on whether they need five thousand dollars for this or six for that or four, four for that. I think they've got a good budget here, I think that, yeah, but I don't think anybody in staff here is trying to put money in here just so we charge our repairs extra money. In there for a reason, so.
Well, they're all estimates, of course.
Yeah.
But we but we we tax on the basis of these estimates, so it doesn't matter how you cut the cake. We're taxing people on the basis of these estimates. Okay, so. I'm ready to move on here, there's no other comments. All right, I'm moving then to item number five C, which is the draft storm water management budget. And that, there is a briefing note on page twelve. And then the storm water management budget is on page thirteen of nineteen. And. Well, again, to the C A O, how do you want to handle it?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, I think with respect to. This particular budget, as the as the treasurer indicated earlier on. The first two paragraphs are very similar with respect to the C P I increases, two point seven four and one point five respectively. And fifteen percent raise back to insurance premium. So the net operating budget for the storm is has decreased by seven thousand six hundred forty-five, nine percent. And mainly due to decreasing maintenance and repair costs, five thousand. Bigger item with respect to storm water budget this year is the is the is the large cap to last. Pass that over to the to the chair.
And and the large capital courses the two range programs.
And that that is perhaps, Mr. Chair, the special adjustment.
All right, further discussion here? Okay, I'm hearing none.
I think, Mr. Chair, I think I think we have pretty much decided that we're going to get those two range systems done.
And we still haven't figured out how we're financing it, but so far, the way I'm hearing it, it's going to be to borrow one and a half million dollars. That's what you're heading, that's what you're heading for, unless you do something. And so now I'm at item number five D, which is the draft waste collection and recycling budget. And that, the briefing note is on page fourteen, and the budget it shows on page fifty. And of course, we have a new contractor on the job here. And you can see that the contract collection goes from three sixty-nine budgeted to three forty-two budgeted. Anybody else got any comments here? I noticed that we're generating revenue of two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars from bag sales. But I don't know what the cost of those sales is because it seems to be embedded in line item fifty-three oh seven. Which is bags plus miscellaneous at twenty-three thousand. So.
That's a pretty good return on investment.
Well, it's not a return on investment, I think that's the way we finance our, that's the way we finance our curbside collection.
It still looks pretty good, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. But as you can see, our curbside collection, roadside collection is still going to come in at three forty-two. And which the bag sales certainly do not cover the total cost at two ninety-five. Other questions with regard to this budget? If there's no other questions, I'm going on. Go ahead, can I hear somebody?
No, it's okay, I've got the answer, it's okay.
Okay, so now I'm at item number five E, which is the draft waste disposal and transfer site. And draft waste disposal and transfer site briefing note is on page sixteen. Budget itself is on page seventeen. Discussion, if any, questions, if any. Are you done?
Well, I just I I just have one highlighted here, that's and that's on the the engineering disposal sites. I under totally understand what that's all about, we spent thirty-two thousand in twenty twenty-one. And we're looking for for a little twenty thousand more, a little twenty thousand more on taxation, but. I know that that thirty-two could have been. A lot higher too. And is that is that pretty much a through through your two? And is that, is that pretty much a, uh, through, through you to, uh, Mr. CIO? Um, is that? We have pretty much the same inspections on those sites for every year. It was fluctuating.
Um, through the, uh, through, through the chair, uh, typically, the sampling, uh, program, uh, is, is, uh. Relatively consistent. I do believe that the tractor operations are correct, but, but mistaken, but, uh. The, uh, Scott Road, uh, we're required annually to submit, uh, to an ACP. Report, and with the, uh, with the closed, uh, Princeton, uh, landfill site, it's, it's every two years. Uh, that, that report is required. I believe this year, uh, both, uh, up in twenty twenty-two, all the old reports are required.
So the fifty-three may not be another question, according to you.
I, I would, I, I would anticipate that that would be, uh, would be much closer to the fifty-three than, than thirty-two.
Any other questions here? Okay, I'm moving on to item number five F, which is the draft agricultural drainage budget. And, uh, the briefing note is on page eighteen and budget is on page nineteen. Questions, if any? And there is a recommendation here. Recommendation is on the bottom of page eighteen, uh, which is to direct staff to include the twenty twenty-two agricultural drainage budget estimates. Into the overall draft operating budget for committee and council final review. And then transfer the twenty twenty-one unspent legal budget of ten thousand into. The township municipal drain reserve. I'll leave the recommendation. On page, uh, Mayor Deschout moving, uh, does he have a second or? Counselor Hunter, seconding. Go to call the question, those in favor? Questions carried. Okay, uh, that includes, that concludes the agenda that I have in front of me. And as now I'm on item number six, which is council inquiries notices motion and looking for. Anything arising here at item number six.
Mr. Mayor, you're asking questions before you go ahead, and I just want to go back to the tennis court situations, uh, where we still have the money in. Uh, in, in the budget, um. Now, for the Cardinal tennis courts, we've got two hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and six dollars. In there. And I, I, I've certainly had. Virtually through twenty twenty-one, virtually no one asked me about tennis courts. I've had a lot of people ask me about dog park many times, but not tennis courts. When do, when, I guess, I need some guidance here, when is the decision going to come where we're going to take. Either one or both of those items off the taxation.
When I hear a motion to do so. And if you're making the motion to take the Cardinal tennis courts off this capital, draft capital. I will entertain that motion if they can find a second. Mayor, he does?
I know that some people want tennis courts, no doubt about, about that. But for these two tennis courts. To spend thirty near half million dollars. On these two tennis courts this year, when we've got a, unexpected two hundred thousand dollars, we've got to spend on the pool. The taxpayers have to pay for it, I just don't see how we can justify doing, doing these two tennis courts. In, in that budget. You take that half million dollars that's in, in that budget, their, their capital budget from taxation, if we borrow the one and a half million is. One point two three one million, take a half million dollars off, I could even take a half a million dollars off the. One and a half million we borrowed, or borrowed a million, or they take a half million dollars off the taxation and tax for seven hundred. Thousands, so.
Chair's looking for direction. Your, your analysis is absolutely right on bang.
I mean, we kept them off, I don't see how we can afford to do it this year. Or any grant money for it, I just don't see how we can afford it.
Do you have a second, or, Mr. Packwood, are you seconding that motion?
Sir.
Further discussion on that motion, which would remove those two items. Counselor Dilwa.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I do believe. As you know, I've been fighting the Johnstown tennis courts for two, three years. I do believe, uh. I, I, I do believe we could do it a lot cheaper than two hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
Well, I just wish we would have a group applied to the port, for some of the port money to do it.
Well, and that's okay to say that, but then there's no guarantees either.
No, but so, big thing, it shows, it shows community interest, it does, and, 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 and there's no question, Sarah can apply to. To report for that. All I'm saying is, I think, I did a little homework here, and I'm sure we could save a hundred thousand dollars. On the Johnstown court. So before we take it right off the table, I like to at least look into. Maybe downsizing or whatever out of this two twenty-six, because I don't know what two hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and forty covers. All I know is what I got. Prices on paving and fencing comes out to about a hundred and thirty thousand. Screaming lights. So before we at least take it right off. And off the table, I would like to at least keep constant on it to see if we can't downsize it. Of this two hundred and twenty-six thousand. Okay, uh, so now I've got to figure out how to deal with this, but Deputy Mayor wants in, and I've been determined how I'm going to deal with this.
Uh, just, uh, question for, uh, Counselor Dilwa, uh, suggested that, um, apply to the. Port or Sarah apply for, that was done last year, right? We didn't, we didn't choose the project, but, but, but there was a budget, though, right? Yeah, and was that the one thirty?
Uh, I, yeah, I, I don't know, the one that came up.
The one that came up, so, so, but you don't know where, where this figure came.
No, I'm.
Coming from, it's not those original numbers from, from that.
No, no.
From that one, right?
And the Cardinal got added in.
Oh, it's because the grant application. Right, right, but that wasn't successful, that's what the numbers here are based on.
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously, when you're applying to grant, you.
Right.
Max, right, so there could be, there could be your, your comment that is that there could be a reduced scope that doesn't have anywhere near the impact to do the Johnstown ones. And, and you'd be okay with losing the Cardinal ones?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I, I mean, if you, if you people are, yeah, I just, like I said, I thought for this Johnstown one for.
Yeah, I can, I can get, I can get, I can get at least seeing it through till the end, for sure.
Yeah.
Especially a reduced scope.
Can't downsize it, yeah.
Sure, I could, I could, I could look at that.
No, bearing in mind that I still have the Hunter Packwood motion in front of me, Councilor Karen.
Yes, uh, and, and. I would. I would, I would like to see Sarah or Sarah. Apply for the, for the tennis court repairs, and, and this is the reason I'm asking, because the tennis courts. It's my understanding, now, I could be totally wrong, but it's my understanding that Sarah will still control the tennis courts. Comes from taxpayers' money, they have no right to do that. That means everybody can use it anytime they want, free of charge.
Absolutely.
And I, well, the reason I, the reason I'm bringing that up is I do believe last year, when we were talking about Sarah getting money for this. They were going to have a lock and gate on the tennis courts, and you had to be a member of Sarah to use the tennis courts.
Oh, I don't know where you heard that.
Okay, so.
I, I thought I did.
Okay, so hang on one second, so what's happening here is I'm getting, uh, I'm getting debate which is off motion. Uh, and, and I'm getting too conflicting, well, actually, they're not conflicting, in some ways they're compatible, but here's the point. The motion that I have in front of me. The motion that I have in front of me would take the two projects off the table. And I says, I'm, I propose that we deal with that motion. And then if Counselor Dilwa wants to put us another motion forward to put in a hundred and thirty thousand for Johnstown tennis courts. We'll deal with that as a separate issue. But I think there's two separate issues here that I have to deal with. I think the proper way to deal with them is to deal with the Hunter Packwood motion first. And have, and resolve that issue and then come back to Counselor Dilwa's issue. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say if there's any more debate on taking those two projects off the table. I'd like, I'll hear that, but then I'm going to call the question on that specific issue. Uh, one beyond that, if Counselor Dilwa puts a motion forward. Okay, so Deputy Mayor.
So before it gets to, to that, I'll, I'll ask the, uh, mover if they would consider an amendment to their, to the, uh. If they'd be willing to consider an amendment to remove the Cardinal tennis courts and reduce the scope to a hundred and thirty thousand. But they still consider, right, would they still consider, if they're not, if I. If I asked that.
Okay, so. I- i- if you actually asked to, what the Deputy Mayor is asking, it becomes a friendly amendment and the motion, I'll just reword the motion. Um, if that's not of your, if, if that's not your wish, I'll call the question as it's, as it's on the table. Because it hasn't actually put forward an amendment, he's put forward a request that you accept a friendly amendment.
I think it needs to be put forward, right, put forward, I just don't see. The Johnstown tennis courts were, were built and I was in the tax before, they reduced, they reduced the prices, they reduced the price to try to get them. Up, they've had to be repaired two or three times over the years because they weren't done properly. Budget that they had there, like research to do, to get it, they were going to stand up and be, be done, so. I think it needs to come off this year and back next year, we haven't got, got as much, it deals with price.
Fair enough.
For.
Call the question.
Okay, so I'm going to call the question as it is, uh, with those two items being removed completely. All right, those in favor of that motion? One, two, three, four. And so there's, uh.
So.
Okay, so that's carried. So those two items are off the table. Now I'll go back to Counselor Dilwa, do you want to put another motion on the table?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor, for two thousand, I have no idea, uh. But, uh, Counselor, I understand with the two hundred and twenty-six, I, I haven't seen any, anything where it's supposed to be done right. What's a hundred and thirty thousand isn't going to be done, so.
Okay, so you're putting a motion on the table of the Johnstown tennis courts.
That we look at it.
Uh, and, and budget for a hundred and thirty thousand. Be budgeted, uh, at, at a reduced scope of a hun- to a hundred, of, of a hundred and thirty thousand.
Called reduced scope, a hundred and thirty thousand, yes.
Okay, so now, does Counselor Dilwa have a second, or he does? Okay, so I'll have Deputy Mayor second it. To, uh, hundred thirty. So now, before I go on here, I just want to make sure, um. If the clerk is with me, uh, Madam Clerk, I haven't given you the exact wording, have you got the intended wording here for Counselor Dilwa's motion? Can't hear, here, I think you're muted.
Sorry, through the chair, I didn't realize I was still on mute there. Um, yes, I do understand the parameters of the motion at hand.
Okay, I'm going to call the question on that motion. Any further speakers to that motion? All right, I'm going to call the question on that motion. Johnstown tennis courts back on the Capitol plant at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Those in favor? One, two. Opposed, if any? One, two, three, four. So the vote is two in favor, four opposed, the motion fails. Okay, so that deals with that. All right, and, uh, so now I'm, I'm, uh. Back at council inquiries notices a motion again, uh, unless somebody has something else to bring from earlier in the meeting. And I don't hear anything coming forward, and so I'm going to go on to item number seven, which is the mayor's report. I have nothing to report this evening, uh, and, uh, I'll move to item number eight. Do we have anyone on Zoom that wants to ask a question through the clerk, to the clerk?
Through the chair, no, no one is on Zoom, and I have not received any further comments via email or call.
Thank you very much. I'm at item number nine, we have no closed session. Item number ten is the motion to adjourn, the chair's looking for the motion to adjourn. Mr. Packwood moves, does he have a second? He doesn't really need one. Motion, I don't know whether people realize it or not, motion to adjourn does not require a seconder and is not debatable, those in favor? Those is carried.